Good evening, everybody here at our council chambers this evening at Milpitas City Hall. I want to welcome all the folks that are here with us tonight as we conduct the city's business. I feel like many in the community are still on holiday by the looks of the empty chairs I see. But hey, we have a long holiday season in Milpitas that I can say. Christmas trees are still shining across our town. We just got out of our closed session, and so I'll look to our city attorney, Chris Diaz, for any announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing legally required to be reported at a closed session this evening, but the council did give direction to staff, and some items will return on the open session agenda on the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. And next up, we have our pledge of allegiance. All in attendance, please stand.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guards, prepare to post the colors. Color guards, post the colors. Color guards, honor the colors. Dismissed. Color guards dismissed.
Thank you very much. Why don't you pick up that microphone, introduce yourself, and also your parent leaders here. There's a switch on there if you want to press it up. Yep.
From Troop 92, our scout leaders are Ms. Zerate and Mr. Chase.
My name is Arjun, and our scout leaders are Ms. Zerate and Mr. Chase.
Well, my name is Anthony. And our scout leaders are Mr. Chase and...
My name is Trune.
All right, great job. Anthony, where's your handkerchief at? Where's your handkerchief? You might go get that next time, all right? Guys, troop members, make sure you take care of your fellow troop, okay? All right, always give them a call, remind them next time. Okay. Thank you, guys. Moving on to the invocation. Tonight's invocation is presented by Councilmember Fan.
I'd like to defer to Councilmember Nunez if he's much better at this than I am.
Councilmember Nunez.
Sure, thank you. And even though there's not every seat is filled here today, I do know that there are persons watching. So I wanted to thank all of you that are watching here in person, all those that helped put all this material together, because it is the work of the city to make things better for not only those that live here, but those that visit. I want to remember that during these times now, City of Milpitas is important to all of us. But things are going on in the world and in the nation that are really important to make sure that we sustain the type of life that we have endeavored to show to the world is the right way to go. I think that we need to remember that the issues that are here before us are important, but there's other things going on in this world that put some of us in harm's way. And we really want everyone to be able to come home safely to their families. Amen.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Nunez. Moving on to presentations. We do have a presentation this evening, and I'll invite the Vice Mayor and City Council to join me at the podium. Hello, Milpitas. Thanks for tuning in. If you're at home on your couch or out at your local park, walking your dog on your phone, watching the meeting, it's very exciting to be in the cloud. We have a proclamation this evening during our presentation portion of our agenda tonight. And so I'll go ahead and present this proclamation on behalf of the great City Council and the City of Milpitas. This month, we're declaring as Racial Healing Month. This is a request brought to our City Hall, and we're going to honor it. We have all witnessed racial divisiveness rising in America's urban, rural, suburban, and tribal communities today that threatens the very core of this country's unified front. In our country, just like those who came before us, it is our duty to protect the children of this country and maintain communities in which they may all be given the opportunity to succeed. We understand and recognize that there is a racial divide in our country. And we're so fortunate to be here in Milpitas and have just the most special community of harmony and peace. But throughout the country, we must all work earnestly to heal the wounds created by racial, ethnic, and religious bias and build an equitable and just society so that all children in our future can thrive. It comes down to the children. Children have the right to be provided every opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive in nurturing environments that don't violate their safety, dignity, and humanity. Every single person has the capability to make a simple change within him or herself that can have a profound effect on an entire society. If we all dedicate ourselves to the principles of truth, racial healing, and transformation, we can all bring about the necessary changes in thinking and behavior that will propel this great country forward as a unified force where racial biases will become a thing of the past. Racial healing is a vital and crucial commitment to the education, social, mental, and overall well-being of all our children in our future. So here at the City of Milpitas, in conjunction with others throughout the United States of America, we urge all citizens, Milpitasians, and Americans, and anybody on this planet to promote racial healing and transformation in the ways that are best suited for them individually as a means to working together to ensure the best quality of life for every child. Now, therefore, I, Rich Tran, and my great City Council of Milpitas, we do hereby proclaim that this city honors and recognizes January, and specifically January 21st, as the National Day of Racial Healing. And the City of Milpitas takes great honor in being a leader in the nation. Thank you. We'll present this proclamation. Yes, Councilmember Nunez, come on up, would you, please? Yes.
But don't get too far away. When I first came to the city, we had a few flag raisings. And those really are symbols of the different communities we have, the different nationalities, ethnicities. And we now have almost three or four a month. And persons may think that's easy, and it really is not. That takes a lot of thought, a lot of effort. And so we will have this presented on an ongoing basis. But the person that actually helps with that throughout this city is Renee. And so if you could come up. You can't take the picture this time because you really are, you symbolize this proclamation for the city. No, no, I want you all to stay up here.
Hit, hit, Renee.
And then lastly, I heard the mayor talk, say at least three times about children. And as adults, we get to listen to anybody we want to and determine if we want to believe that person or not. Allow that thought to come into our head and stay there or let it go right out the other ear. Youth don't have that ability. And so later on this month, there will be a community conversation hosted by the Milpitas Unified School District and the mayor, talking about those issues going on currently over at the school district with regard to the blackface issue and others. And I think this is right on point. So I want to say thank you, Mayor, for representing the city in that discussion because it needs to take place. And it shows that two public agencies in a city of this size can actually have a common focus and really go out and help parents and other entities that maybe don't have children there, but have youth come into their businesses and into their community and need tools to help have those kinds of discussions. So I was thankful to hear that that was going to take place and glad that this city stepped up to do that. So thank you for that.
I got, pass one more note here. I need to make an announcement about an event coming up here. The City of Milpitas is always proud to support our young performers. Here's a great opportunity to see our homegrown talent onstage this weekend in Center Stage's production of Disney's Little Mermaid. The show opens this Thursday, January 9th, and plays through Sunday, January 12th. Tickets are available on the show's Eventbrite website, which can be found easily on their Recreation Facebook page. We love the page, by the way. Best government, city page in Milpitas. People can also call Recreation and Community Services at 408-586-3210. I remembered it. For more information, I'll be there Sunday night. Come on down. Moving on here to public forum. Those in the audience are invited to address our City Council on any subject not on tonight's agenda. Speaker mine, speakers must come to the podium, state their name and city of residence for our Clerk Mary Lovell's record, and limit spoken remarks to three minutes. As an item not listed on the agenda, no response is required from city staff or the council, and no action can be taken. Council may instruct the city manager to place the item on a future meeting agenda. That being said, the public forum has now commenced. If you're here this evening, come on up, Frank, I see ya.
Greetings to the mayor, city council, staff, and our audience here and at home. I have a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. The first one is Saturday, February 1st, 9:00 a.m. to noon. It's the District 5170 International Expo. And it's a Rotary event that'll be held at the University of Silicon Andra at 1521 California Circle here in Milpitas. And they're going to talk about what Rotary International does in their showcase, open to the general public, admission is free. And you will hear and learn what Rotary International is, how do they help other countries, overview of projects, partnership with overseas Rotary clubs, and the positive project outcome. So it's free, and you're all welcome. The second item I have is the 27th Annual Milpitas Chamber Auction and Crab Feed coming on Friday, March 6th at Napradaq Hall. At 5:30 p.m., silent auction begins. Dinner is served at 7:00. And tickets are $60, and if you're an early bird, it's only $55. So hope to see you all there at the upcoming 27th Annual Auction and Crab Feed. Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it, Frank, thank you. Public forum continues. Welcome again tonight to the first regular Milpitas City Council meeting of 2020. Certainly a very special year for all our lives with 2020. And so if Barbara Walters was here, she'd say this is 2020. Yes, Mr. Monte Miore, come on up.
Hello, everybody. Anyway, this is just to commend you guys. You guys, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, tonight, you're doing great, great job. Happy 3 Kings, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, ladies.
Appreciate that, thank you very much, sir. Okay, I don't see anybody else for the public forum going once, going twice. The public forum has concluded. Moving to announcements, we'll go to our interim city manager, Steve McCaris.
And I have no announcements.
Thank you very much. Steve, I will go next to Councilmember Fan.
I have one request, or I have two requests of the council for to place on future agenda items. Firstly, today Senator Scott Wiener had announced his new iteration of SB 50, the comprehensive bill to address transit-oriented development. And I would like for the city to get an update. Chris, if you could help us with that and take a position, whether it be to support or oppose, but ultimately write something to the state. And in that conversation, we can discuss next steps because some of the provisions outlined in SB 50 are probably things that we should be doing anyways. And then the other ask that I have is that in the future agenda, I'd like...
The next agenda, next meeting.
The next agenda, that we have a conversation about speed cameras. That's something that the City of Fremont recently adopted. It was paid for with their county tax transportation measure and also with grants. So it's gotten a lot of good results, especially for public safety. And I'd love to have that conversation.
I'll second those.
Thank you.
Chris, did you, I see you reaching.
You know, I was just gonna, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Fan, I just wanted to note, yeah, we're happy to bring an update on SB 50, just kind of what we know in terms of what's been disclosed. And I think some of the language did come out recently. I probably wouldn't take a position, but I will provide you the information, and we can walk through kind of where the council may want to go. And you could direct me at that point, or our city manager just sends a sort of letter to the state.
Certainly. Thank you.
Did you want that, just to clarify, on the next agenda? Or do you want something in February?
Yes, I...
The likely vote by the end of this month.
Yeah, because we'll decide.
Yeah, the bill doesn't differ too much from its previous iteration, so it wouldn't be much additional work there.
Okay, sounds like we have support from the council. Yep.
Yeah, we don't want the council to take a vote, but if there's general consensus.
So can I just ask a quick question about the one on AB 50, Weiner's bill? My understanding, they're going, is that they're going to vote on that one relatively soon. I just don't want to be talking about it after they voted already to pass it on. So just make sure we're within that timeline. And they've already made two changes to it, I understand. And if there's another body, like the Cities Association, that one of us belong to, it could be any, any agency. I don't want to hold that person up if they need to vote on something and they need our input.
Gotcha. The goal would be to bring it back to you, I think, on your meeting on the 21st.
Okay.
Oh, sounds good, it's all connecting.
So I'm fine with that, by the way.
Awesome. Very well, very well. Okay, thank you very much. Looking forward to those two requests. Next up, we have Councilmember Nunez.
Yes, so I remembered during public comment, I think it was during the last two meetings, we had first a person, well, at one of the last two meetings, person from the pines coming up and asking where we're at with parking in the pines. And I said, if you could bring that back. And since I don't see it here, could I just be told what date you plan to bring that back? I know we're going to have the budget discussion on the 28th. And that, that's an item that was budgeted. We didn't spend the dollars. I'd hate to see that money sent someplace else. Especially if, if you're working on another plan, I'd like to hear that. If you're not, if you need our help to work on another plan, I'm sure we'd be willing to help you. So you probably want to do it before we help you. But you know when that's coming back.
I'm going to ask our engineering director to...
Boy, in the meantime, as he's walking up here, I'll second that request as I think that would be great for the pines. And I think Councilmember Nunez may have some great things to add to it. Hey, how you doing, Steve Erickson?
Yeah, evening, Mayor and Council, City Engineer. So I had to go from memory here. The Pines Pilot Parking Permit Program, Project 3451, actually, the funding was transferred to last CIP cycle, to fiscal year 2021. So it was pushed out a year. And the reason why is staff had been monitoring the situation, had not been receiving the complaints that we had been in the, in the past when this issue was really hot. And one of the reasons that, as I recall, we presented was that staff had found that the apartments that are on Main Street were actually subletting their, their units. And that was, the theory was contributing to the problems in the pines. They also had figured out after, after the apartments had resolved that problem, PD had done some night surveys of the parking garages there and had figured out that most of the garages were near empty. So we're not seeing the problem. And so that was the reason why the recommendation was to push the funding off for a year and just kind of monitor it.
So today's newspaper, Mercure News, indicated that they've opened up both the Bariessa and the Milpitas BART station. Everything but BART. I mean, so the rails, the buses are now going there and that the parking and the traffic is being impacted. Now, they only talked about Bariessa. But my hope was that what would be brought back to us is, because they mentioned about the neighboring communities, that what would be brought back to us is what the impact has been now. Not that I don't, that old information is still there, but now what is the new information? And I remembered, the police chief talked about, once that opened up, what he was waiting for, the bidding process for the station, the PD new station. With them being open now, I think that it is an appropriate time to look at parking in the pines. And if we're going to, now's a good opportunity to look at asking for a substation there for our own PD. Because once persons start parking, those habits are hard to break. And if they lease out every space they have there between now and when BART does open, then our ability to ask for that is gone. So, and I don't, I don't, I apologize. I don't mean to really discuss it all. I'm just saying, that's why I thought, when is it going to be back? So that we can have that discussion. I felt the heat on this side coming, Chris. So I was just looking for the date.
Yeah, let's make a date. Or just arrange and then...
So I'm not sure, we could either talk about it during any of the budget items we have coming up? Or we could just pick a date out there that I suppose staff could do some kind of least preliminary look at what the impacts are? Because I'm hearing you want us to really take a look. Steve, is there, from what we've done in the past, is there an easy method between us and the police department as far as what is happening in real time now with the BART station open?
Well, so there's two pieces of it. There's the pines, so we could take another, I guess, quick survey of that. And again, I don't believe we've had any complaints within the last six, eight months of a parking impact. And the other piece is, recall that we have the TASK parking project where we implemented a four-hour time-limited parking signage within a half-mile circular radius around the BART station. So those signs are in place, and that parking is, parking restriction is being enforced. So we could also bring that back and see what the impact is.
How much time do you need to do that?
I would like a little longer than next meeting.
So is it the first or second meeting in February that we could do that?
Second would be great.
Second meeting? Okay, then that, we could commit to the second meeting. Thank you.
I like that a lot, proactive policymaking, absolutely. Thank you very much, Councilmember Nunez.
My second item is street calming. First, I want to remind council that, in my words, I think I, I'm the one that spoke the loudest about not including that going forward. And in the city Cities Conference in Long Beach, there was a whole section on transportation. And one of the strands was on street calming. So I now apologize because just putting on a tie doesn't make me smart, I can tell you that. And as, as I listen to things that are considered street calming, I think a lot of that could be used in the discussions that are taking place now for La Quinta Hotel. So I'd like to, and I think where we left that item was that it would be brought back to us for further consideration where more information was gathered. And, and I'm just talking about, you know, it was a, an hour and 10-minute presentation about the different kinds of things you can do to guide people from not using a particular driveway, of to slow them down without putting a stoplight in, things of that sort. But it addressed a lot of the conversation I'm seeing on Nextdoor from residents about that hotel. But if you expand that to other sections of the city, I now better understand what... But if you expand that to other sections of the city, I now better understand what street calming is. So I'd like to see if we couldn't bring that back for further consideration now that I understand the topic better. And since that is what we had said when we brought that up, I'd like to see that, oh, there it is, brought that back, that brought back also. Now, not next week, in two weeks, but I see you looking over your glasses, in a reasonable amount of time, but I do think that a little education ahead of time may be material sent out to us, because that was probably in my top three of the sessions I sat in on about what you could do for not a lot of money that would make residents feel safe walking in areas where most persons would feel the traffic flow was so heavy that they didn't want to go outside of their own house. And, and when I was reading on Nextdoor simply about the hotel, that's when it hit me, that's what they were talking about. So I'd like to have that brought back to us if I could, and that's based on what recognition was when we tabled it.
I think just for staff's response, I can respond a little bit, I know we're working on this and our, our transportation planners under Steve Erickson's leadership has, I think, a very good handle on it.
We'll get an update.
Yeah, so we're going to give you an update. I don't, you're not asking for a time, but.
In addition, areas of opportunity.
We will look, as we have this info, we'll go ahead and put it on the appropriate agenda, appropriate time on the agenda, but it won't, it'll be sooner than later.
So February?
Now, I'm going to turn, since I just heard a month, February is just two, a couple of weeks out.
First of March, first meeting in March.
You think by March? By March, and if we can do it sooner, we will. I'm just letting you know, city manager will put it up sooner, as soon as we can, as soon as we have it ready for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, I'd love to see it on the board. Thank you very much, Councilmember Nunez. Next up, we're going to Councilmember Montana.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things that my colleagues had mentioned. So with Councilmember Fan, he spoke about SB 50. I am the representative for the Cities Association and I know we took a stand, all the cities took a stand on SB 50. However, now there have been some changes to SB 50, so we haven't met yet, but when that, when that happens, I'll bring it back. And so we need to make sure that we're in sync, so that would be before we make any, any announcement or recommendations. And then on the other, the other topic was the, you spoke about the pines. I remember that, when there was a lot of hoopla on that, but I don't think, this is what I think would happen is, is that people found out it wasn't really the people at the apex that was causing the problems. It's what it, what it is, from my understanding. It's a lot of the people that have people living, extended families living there and that's what was the cause. And then plus, I remember the Vice Mayor had also done her research and it was going to affect, the people didn't realize that it was going to affect some of those cul-de-sacs, remember? And they were going to have, they were going to be fined. Remember, you did, there was a no parking area, there's, in the pines, there's little sections in there that, do you recall?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I could share more.
Yes. So, yeah, they were, they were going to be fined, because remember the whole thing was we were going to put some signage and if, and we were going to, people would have to pay a fine. And once they heard that, they just kind of backed off. But we found out that that was, it was really the, the apex people that were in that area using of the parking. So I think that's why that kind of died down. And then thirdly, so from what I want to speak about is the, the vaping. I have already spoken to the city manager about this. What I would like to request is to have a ban on stores that sell any vaping cigarettes, I guess you call them. I know what we have to approve to get the four hours to do some research on that, but I think you already kind of more or less know what you need to be done. So anyway, I'd like to have staff request that. And I think you might be working on it, we're just kind of looking into it.
Chris, is that a legal possibility? I just want to.
I'll answer briefly and then I want us to try to move on a little bit so that we don't get accused of current act issues. But yes, no, we did look at it. Certain cities have essentially prohibited electronic smoking devices through their tobacco retailer ordinances. We do not have an existing tobacco retailer ordinance, so that would be something that we'd have to adopt for the first time. And I would need to understand if we have any tobacco retailers in the city as well. But it's something that we're happy to look into if the council's in favor of that and we can move it forward and, and bring it back with some study options, study session or an options.
Yeah, it's becoming epidemic. You've probably seen in the news, a lot of, there's been a, a lot of deaths with a lot of our young students, so, okay, thank you, that's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Montana, and I'll follow up. I have a request. Let's put an item on the future agenda. The Dumpster Days idea, Councilmember Montana, has been discussed, I know other cities do it, so there's a framework and strategy or practice with our neighbors, I know in San Jose. And so if we can get that on the agenda, just so that we can make a decision if we're going to do it or not and just get it started. Oh, absolutely.
Yes, I put my apologies. So also, I completely forgot, Councilmember Nunez mentioned about the calming, the traffic calming. I think what, in our next transportation, transportation subcommittee, that will be discussed and then also the, those flashing lights, I don't know what they're called, but the traffic calming specialness and some circulation routes that, those, that will be discussed at the next, so, transportation, transportation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Montana. Next up, we have Vice Mayor Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So I just had, just a quick follow-up in terms of Councilmember Montana's, yes, that was, one of the things that I would like to add if, for the pines, as we're looking into it, because at the time, I did go out there and was just at, doing my own survey and that was one of the things that did come up, was regarding the citations that were happening in the cul-de-sacs. But I wanted to, if you could just maybe do a timeline, do to, just, you know, I want folks who are, as we're starting the new year, I want folks to understand how policy is done and how these ideas are really moving into flirtation and I know that, I mean flourishing into flirtation. And so a lot of people are watching at home, maybe their first meeting, and I know that the pines permit was something that was of interest to folks, so maybe, I know it would be too much work to go back and do all the minutes and take them out, but if you could at least give me and us a timeline, just of when the idea started, that way, folks, if they have any questions, they could go back to the video and go back to the minutes and honestly, ourselves too, since this has been something that's been ongoing, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, there's no further announcements, we'll go ahead and proceed. Yes, Vice Mayor Dominguez.
Thank you, I did have an announcement, I just, I didn't edit, I apologize, I didn't, I thought it was two separate things. But I do want to announce that the San Jose Women's March is going to be taking place on January 18th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I would, at this time, please save the date on your calendars, colleagues, you're more than welcome to attend. Please let me know if you guys will be in attendance to make sure that we coordinate that. But this is a great time for our region to really continue, this, this year's march is going to be our power counts. It's just making sure that everyone understands that they have their own power to make sure that we don't only continue advancing women policies and issues, but that our unity and our voices are stronger together. They're going to meet at the San Jose City Hall at 11:00 AM. I also want to, the news is not out, it's first to know, we are actually going to have one of our own in Milpitas be one of the guest speakers. I believe she's going to be one of five and she has been selected by the board, Ms. Carrington, who is a young lady who did, was very passionate and she craziously came forward with the blackface incident. So we're going to be having a power sign party at Milpitas High. I'll make sure they send that information to everybody. Hopefully you guys could join us and we, as a city, could go and cheer on one of our own as she addresses over 20,000 people in Arena Green. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Dominguez. Next up, we have the announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd ask the mayor and council to please disclose any personal or financial conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight, tonight's agenda. We'll start at the end. Councilmember Fan? Councilmember Montana? Councilmember Nunez? Vice Mayor Dominguez? And Mayor Tran?
None.
Thank you. I'd also ask the mayor and council to please disclose any campaign contributions of 100 or more received with, within the last 12 months from any party entering into a contract on tonight's agenda. Councilmember Fan? Councilmember Montana? Councilmember Nunez? Vice Mayor Dominguez? And Mayor Tran?
None.
Let the record reflect none to both questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Next up, we're moving to approval of agenda, looking to the council. We got a motion by Councilmember Nunez, we have a second by Councilmember Fan to approve the agenda. All in favor? Aye. Any post? The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on, next to the consent calendar, if there's any requests, now is the time, looking to my colleagues.
Move the consent.
Okay. We got a motion to move the consent calendar, a second by council, by council member, we have a motion to move the consent calendar by Councilmember Nunez, we have a second by Councilmember Montana. All in favor? Aye. Any post? The motion is carried. Thank you, moving on here. Under Community Services and Sustainable Infrastructure, Agenda Item Number Four, approve the Milpitas Energy and Environmental Sustainability Commission 2020 Work Plan. And we'll welcome up Elaine Marshall and Tony Enda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Elaine Marshall, Deputy Director of Public Works. Here, I've got a short presentation to just preview for you, the work plan for the Energy and Environmental Sustainability Commission. As you know, the commission actually was revamped and modernized in late 2018. It was formerly the Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee. In late 2018, it was expanded, its scope was, like I said, updated and it became the Energy and Environmental Sustainability Commission. Their purpose, next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I control the slides here. Sorry about that. The purpose of the commission is, the pur, I thought there was a magic, a man behind the screen here. The purpose of the commission is to serve as the advisory body to the city council on matters concerning energy, environmental sustainability, climate action, as well as source reduction, recycling and household hazardous waste management. They meet regularly, the third Wednesday of every month, and have been working through lots of issues related to sustainability and energy. For their 2020 work plan, they have identified topics that include planning and promoting sustainability events, including an Earth Day Resource Fair, developing an energy efficiency campaign, reviewing and promoting other city sustainability events. We do a lot of water efficiency and sustainable landscape classes, compost workshops, et cetera. And they also wanted to look at potentially hosting or promoting a citywide garage sale to promote kind of reuse of items. The commission will also be reviewing and providing feedback on city plans and services, including solid waste, garbage and recycling services, reviewing and providing feedback on the city's efforts through the energy, Guaranteed Energy and Water Savings and Facility Resilience Project, otherwise known as our ESCO project, providing feedback on the trails, bike and pedestrian master plan, and also some feedback as the city works, works on our water and sewer master plans. Additionally, the commission will also, on a regular basis, advise and make recommendations on key issues related to odor, including our odor monitoring pilot project, as well as Silicon Valley Clean Energy and energy-related issues. And over the next year, as we engage with a consultant, an update to the city's climate action plan. With that, here to take any questions and we recommend that the council approve the commission's work plan for 2020.
Great work, Elaine and Public Works, Tony, and we'll go to Councilmember Nunez.
So first, I am the liaison to the, to the commission and you both work really hard, I have to tell you that. They even let me call in when I can't make it and they don't hang up on me. I've been to some commissions where suddenly it just goes click and I know what that means and so I don't call back. You have, I believe, taken that commission to a different level. It is engaged in areas that in the past it hasn't been. And so I just want to thank you for all the work you both have done. And I say that looking at you because Tony sits there with me, we're always going, you hear what you just said? Hear what you just said? So it really is meant for you. You keep us really well informed and I'm always amazed at the wealth of knowledge you have about the many areas that I'm, that I'm, that you share with us, knowing that you have many other things you're doing. Having said that, I just have a couple of things. One is you don't have any money here. So are you giving the $1,000 back to us?
No, I believe as the.
That's okay, we'll take it.
No. I, I think as the commission continues to work through some of the brainstorming, the planning, there might be an opportunity to identify uses for the $1,000 that's budgeted for the commission, but they haven't really engaged into that piece of it yet.
Okay. And then maybe my last big question is, the question I get most from residents is when, when they see the new, let's do, the, the commission itself and the kind of things they're doing, the question I get is, why doesn't the city itself have more solar panels up? They look at the school district and I say, well, you know, that's the parking lot and such. They go, no, the district put that up a long time ago. Are you going to put up more solar panels for city use or you're going to put them up over your own parking lots? So that would be my, a question I would like an answer that we could give to residents, either, well, I'll stop there.
Sure. Solar at city facilities as well as backup battery storage and resiliency is one of the things that we're working with ENGIE on, that's the Guaranteed Energy and Water Efficiency Program. So you'll be hearing more about the potential for solar on city facilities, additional solar on city facilities in the next, gosh, few months. I think we're coming back to council in early March or, or late, more early to late March with more information on that.
I'll just add to that here, yeah, so like Elaine mentioned, we've been working really hard with ENGIE, after you folks approved us moving forward with the Marge Energy Partner. They have been doing a lot of analysis throughout the city, you may have seen them walking through, looking at all the streetlights in the city, looking at replacements for those. They've done a lot of assessments here throughout all our city facilities, looking at not just the Public Works building where there's a lot of opportunity there for solar, but also this building here, this entire complex as a, as a whole. So there are going to be a lot of presentations we're going to need to do to council, once some of those energy-saving measures have been flushed out. I think, I think the city as a whole will be very excited about what's coming forward with how resilient we potentially could be if we take the necessary steps going forward with what ENGIE's already working, putting together.
And then just the last one being, when you talk about Silicon Valley Clean Energy, which I think of all those CCEs, I think we are a member of one of the better ones in the When do you see coming forward to the city and make a recommendation about either joining a regional one, staying by ourselves, or going to a statewide CCE proposal with the PG&E bankruptcy? Is that something we should look at for this year or really is that's two years away?
Actually, we have invited the CEO, Gaurish Balachandran, from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, to come speak to the council, provide an update on what SVCE is working on and, and their engagement into the conversations about PG&E restructuring in early February. So you'll hear an update and a presentation from Gaurish in February.
And then soon after that, you would make a recommendation to the council with regard to what we should be doing or recommendations of what we should be looking for?
Yeah, we'll look for a council direction at that time, if it's, yeah, if the time is right to, to act on a resolution or, or any other.
Once again, I think you folks do great work with that commission. It. Once again, I think you folks do great work with that commission. You've brought it up at least three steps, and you really have to understand the environment. And persons are coming there. You are one of the few commissions that actually has an audience that participates in the discussion, which I find interesting, and I learn a lot there. So thank you very much for all the time and effort. It shows. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Nunez. Next up, we have Councilmember Montana.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. So I recall that we did approve in our budget to hire that agency. I forgot the name of the one that's doing all the assessments for future solar panels, and I forgot the name of it, but that's just... Because I know we've got so many things, we just forget that we did hire somebody. But on another note, on this presentation, thank you for the presentation. It was very well put. I had a question on our climate action, climate master plan. So I noticed that that's not in here. Is there a reason why it's not in here? We do have a... Has it been approved? Did we approve that?
There is an existing climate action plan that was approved by the council, the City Council, in 2013. What staff is working on is to bring on a consultant to update the climate action plan now that it's 2020 and look forward into 2030, 2045, and 2050 in terms of setting long-term goals for climate action. And so it is on the work plan for the commission. We do envision that the commission is engaged in that process, in working with the consultant, and also helping to engage the community into updating the cap.
Okay. I have the old one. It's in my office. Let me see. The other thing is, I'm also the liaison for the Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and I'm really glad that Gaurish is going to come and do a little presentation. So inform us. We could be educated. It's very interesting to learn about the grid and how all that works. It's very fascinating, actually. And then the other question I had for... What's the name of that? Bay Area Management Air Quality?
Bay Area Air Quality Management District.
Yeah. I noticed here you have the monitoring pilot project. And I recall that we were going to have some type of air monitoring poles installed. How... What's the update on that?
Sure. So right now, we're having staff conducting a monitoring pilot project. And so they are right now on a weekly basis, going out at random times during the week and monitoring the odor issues. They've been trained by Jacobs Engineering Group, which is actually experts in odor monitoring. They've actually also been hired by BACMED for BACMED's odor attribution study. So we're working with... We're having our staff collect data on what odors are present in our communities. So there are sample locations that staff are visiting on a weekly basis and gathering data, as well as gathering data on air or odor issues kind of at the four known sources. So we're working on that first. The intent is to get through a year of this pilot project, identify what the odors are, learn more from BACMED's attribution study before determining what types of...
Action.
Yeah. Monitoring devices to use, because we want to be able to identify what constituent and what compound we should be monitoring for, and what sensors would be best at doing that.
Okay. And so now that we're on area management quality, what is it called?
BACMED?
BACMED. Anyhow, do we have a representative that attends our meetings? You know how we are liaison to this agency and that agency? Do we have a person from our city council that's assigned to that?
The Milpitas City Council does not have a member on the Board of Directors for BACMED. I believe the representative from this area is Councilmember Rod Sinks from Cupertino. He's also, I believe, the chair of the board. So he's been engaged in the odor issues on behalf of the area.
Yeah. I believe also...
Yeah. I'll just add that as part of our ongoing efforts, our Department of Public Works, as long as our engineering department under Steve Erickson, we do take part in the South Bay Stakeholders Order Group. That's a meeting and group that meets on a quarterly basis. It's attended, actually, by Rod Sinks himself as well. But we have members of the various agencies come in. City of Fremont comes as well. San Jose comes in as well. And then the haulers, or not the haulers, but the...
The solid waste facility operators.
But we get a lot of information that gets shared. And BACMED attends those meetings as well. So we get a lot of information that gets shared in there about the various plans that each agency is doing to try to combat odor issues.
Well, I'm really glad that someone is going there. So that South Bay Air Quality, that co-op or that coalition, there are no elected officials on there. It's mostly just staff, right? There's elected officials there as a rep?
Yes.
So do we have a rep, or is it you guys? Oh, you're the rep. Okay. Well, that's good to know. I'm glad that you're keeping us, you know, you'll be keeping us informed.
For the right.
Yeah. So thank you so much. I love it. So thank you. Yeah, I'm glad. And that we do have a rep going there, because it is very important, because that's a big issue that we've been having in our city. And that you're there, you guys are there to represent us, too. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Montana. Next up, we have Vice Mayor Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for your comments, Councilmember Montana. I really appreciate it. In terms of that report that you said you had the old one, which one was it? Is there any way we could get a copy of that, please? Just because, I'll be honest, I haven't read it. And if I have it...
The 2013 Climate Action Plan?
Yeah, we can.
We can provide a link to that.
Just because I probably didn't get it, because I wasn't here.
You can get... We'll send the Vice Mayor a link. I believe it is posted online.
Awesome.
On our website, yeah.
Perfect. And then my second add-on to that is, some of the statements that were made up here reminded me of some comments that I promised our senior citizens at the Senior Center. So every single time I go there, they've been asking me about our commission, and I don't know if this is the place to maybe add their comments, or maybe for you guys to consider as you're doing your analysis in terms of the guarantee... Let's see. The recycling and solid waste services, is that for... That's for the city, correct? Any city facilities?
Yes. It would be all solid waste and recycling services for the community, as well as at city facilities.
Okay. Perfect. Because one of the things that they, not only this group, but other groups have stated is that they are interested in having the separation of recycling bins in all of our city facilities, and I believe that's not in place right now. So a lot of them are asking, especially with our... The programs that we continuously have, if there's any way we could do the reuse, recycle, the 3R model in the programming that we have, right? And so if they can't do the reuse of utensils and so forth because of other things like sanitation, they would really want the bins for them to be able to recycle in all of our facilities, and I actually think that's a great idea. So if you guys could maybe incorporate that as you're thinking about this, not only for the Senior Center, but maybe other city services as well, please?
Makes less sense.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Next up, we have Councilmember Fan.
Slightly on that topic, City Manager, if we could have at some point an update, maybe it should be a closed session issue, since it relates to contracts, but on that topic.
Thank you, Councilmember Fan. So just to clarify, you're wondering if we can go into a closed session to talk about kind of our solid waste contractual arrangement? I'll look at that to see if that's something that we can do, and I can circle back. And if we can't, then it'll be in the open forum.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. And I'll check in with Steve here. Did you want to add anything with staff?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, and thank you, Councilmembers, for allowing me just a moment on this item as well. I was also noting through all this, I recall a speaker and maybe even an email to the council and myself regarding natural gas ban. And I know we did actually cover that. We went through an extensive presentation and some analysis on the building code update, which you did already improve, and that was really for being, having new construction in a manner that would allow for full electrification of the... Of homes and buildings. So that was your action. But then, since then, we have still had some persistent requests, at least from one community member, about natural gas ban. And in looking at this work program and noting the climate action plan update, that would actually be an ideal place for us to study it. So with many of these types of requests, it's not that we say no, but we look for places to, rather than initiate any kind of work effort, to fold it into some work that we're already doing, and that would be an ideal place. So that action plan update, as you know, we're working on securing a consultant to help us through that process. So I just wanted to lay that out there, so if you do get more requests, we could... That's where staff's intending to go in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. We're going to go here to the council. Next up, we have Councilmember Nunez.
And so, Tony, mine's this real quick. The... Can I... I forget, Mike, the name of our commission?
The Energy and Environmental Sustainability Commission?
That is... Good.
Yes.
We also had in there, Mike, one of the areas we're going to look at was the odor issue. Did you two talk and so they're combined now, or did we leave them separate?
If I can chime in on that one there. So the discussion at the... I call it the stick.
Don't go, Mike.
The Science, Technology, Innovation Commission.
That's it.
Yes. So the last time I attended the meeting there, I gave a brief presentation on our plans for the odor monitoring. What we wanted to do internally as staff was to collect enough data first and then work with the Science and Technology Commission on hosting the data or managing the data and putting that online somewhere so it could be consumed by the general public. So we're still in the process right now of just trying to assemble enough data in order for it to be something that's viable. I think we're getting close, so within maybe a month or two from now, we're going to connect with Mike and then the team from, or whatever team that he's able to put together from the Science and Technology Commission, to then start preparing the data directly to them, hosting that information so the general public can consume that.
Is that understanding of the ask, too, Mike? There was a little more to it after you left, Tony.
Okay.
I just want to make sure... I like Tony's explanation. I just want to make sure you heard that same thing, or...
Yes, that was the main feature, creating a dashboard with the data collected.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Nunez. Next up, we have Councilmember Montana.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't... I was looking at your issue, agenda topics. I don't see e-waste here, so was wondering if that's going to be a topic that will be included in that, and...
I think that e-waste could be included under recycling and garbage services. And even under, you know, their ideas for a citywide garage sale in terms of trying to promote reuse before disposing of products. So there are a few opportunities where that can be discussed.
That would be great if you can add the e-waste down there. It's really important. I think we used to have several in our city, but I think we're down to one e-waste site. And I think maybe this commission should do a campaign of letting people know where these e-waste facilities are at. So, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Montana. We're going back to Councilmember Nunez.
So this is more general than just you. I still want to thank you for all you've done, and I am going to move the item. So I'm going back to the City Manager and the City Attorney. Ashwini, probably you and Renee. I just don't see Renee anywhere, because I thought one of the things we attempted to do was sort of take the commissions and... Well, not only merge, but it was sort of focus what they were doing. So their major focus is to provide, be a sounding board for the council. They would be ones we could go to and say, "Here's an issue. Could you look at that and come back to us?" But not have so many projects that now they needed staff intervention, staff help, and actually, suddenly, you find yourselves having your staff doing that work as opposed to the work of folks. So I just want to be real careful not to start building a list so long that we're going right back to what we used to do. So if I miss that, or I'm misspeaking, I just want to hear that, because this is not... I don't expect this to be an all-inclusive list. And so it's not so much you, but as I'm beginning to listen a little bit, we're starting to add things on, they're maybe included, that I thought we were trying to make it a little bit smaller, but it really was they are the advisory to us on topics. And so if we're going away from that, let me know, because I have other things I could add to.
And now, Councilmember Nunez, you are correct. That's kind of the approach we're trying to take with all of the commissions, and we are kind of in the first year of, you know, trying to have consistency across work plans, so it may take us a bit to get there. But if you look at this list, the first few are really things that the commission is planning to do and hoping not really with a lot of staff time. So it's the commission choosing to work on those topics. The remaining, the second and third bullet, it's work that, you know, the council has prioritized, that the staff is working on, and really looking to them in an advisory capacity. And that should be kind of the theme across all the work plans.
Thank you. And then just lastly, the trail bike and pedestrian master plan. Would that be in parks?
I think this commission is going to look at it in terms of transportation, moving away from vehicle miles traveled, you know, kind of getting away from the solo driving.
Okay. Thank you.
Your microphone, sir. Find me. Good? You're good? Thank you.
So if we're ready for a motion, I'd like to receive a... Did you get to that? There you go. Approve the proposed Energy Environmental Sustainability Commission work plan with those additions that were included by councilmembers.
Sounds good to me. We got a motion by Councilmember Nunez for item number four. We have a second by Councilmember Montana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? The motion is carried. Thank you both, Elaine and Tony. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Moving on to Leadership and Support Services. Let's receive and consider an interim update from staff on pulling in research related to mayor and vice mayor roles, provide direction, if any, or take action. Welcome, Ashwini.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ashwini Kanta, Assistant City Manager. Happy New Year to all of you. We have a really brief update. This is an interim update. We're bringing the full report back at the next meeting, but wanted to share some results of the polling as we were asked to in December and get any additional feedback you may have. So just kind of a brief background on this item. We had a couple of council meeting discussions on this item. On December 3, we received some direction as to what council wanted us to bring back in terms of community polling, historical information, as well as legal analysis about the vice mayor and mayor roles in the city, as well as some research on other cities and how they memorialize these roles in their handbooks or their codes. And then we talked about doing a community poll, and we had a couple of very simple questions. We sent the draft questions to the council in December, mid-December, initiated the poll on December 19. So the poll's actually through Open Town Hall, but we have a link on Nextdoor to kind of ensure maximum participation from Milpitas residents. And then not everybody is on Nextdoor, so the link can also be shared with those not on Nextdoor. And so this update to you with the polling results is as of January 3. And so 112 people viewed the survey. 84 people provided responses. We just had four simple questions. The first question was really about whether you reside in Milpitas. As you can see, 90, almost 92% were residents that responded to the poll. The second question was really about whether you reside in Milpitas. The second question was about whether we should have a directly elected mayor or a mayor that's appointed by city council, and kind of have a rotational mayor like some of the cities do. And again, overwhelmingly, everybody was support in favor of a directly elected mayor, so we had almost 93% that were in favor of a directly elected mayor. The third question was about the vice mayor term, and whether the vice mayor should be appointed annually or every two years. And we had almost 68% that supported a two-year vice mayor appointment, 25% supported a one-year, and then 7% were just in another category. And then we also just asked an open-ended question about whether they would like to provide any feedback. We had, most of them did not provide responses, and you have kind of the detailed report in your packet. There were some themes, there was really strong support for an elected mayor. They felt strongly that the mayor should be directly elected by the citizens of Milpitas. There were some comments about supporting a four-year term for mayor, even though that wasn't a question asked, but this was just general comments. There were comments, several comments, supporting a two-year term for vice mayor, there were some comments supporting a one-year term, and then there were comments just related to other city matters. And before we move on to the recommendation, in your packet is also a legal analysis provided by the city attorney, so I'll turn it over to him to talk about that.
Thank you, Ashwini. Just wanted to know for the council, there is a memo in your packet, it's quite brief, but it does cover the relevant government code provisions that would apply to the mayor's role. It also has a very short paragraph about the vice mayor, because there is a limited amount in state law. What it essentially dictates is that the mayor is elected, or directly elected mayor was elected by the, by the voters. That provision in terms of making it a directly elected position was authorized by the voters in 1976. The term that the voters did set was two years. The powers of the mayor are obviously set out within the government code, and the memo does go through those in detail. The vice mayor role would essentially take on the powers of the mayor whenever the mayor is unavailable or absent, and that is essentially all that exists within state law. The one thing, one nuance we did note within the memo is there is an existing Attorney General opinion that indicates that the role of the vice mayor essentially has no fixed term, so it's really at the discretion of the council. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the memo, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Ashwini. Thank you very much, Chris. I am glad this item is back for the council's consideration and possible action. I remain firm on my position on shared leadership as discussed at the prior meeting where this was discussed. Do I think our city government structure is perfect? No, I don't think any government structure is. Do I think our government structure could be better? My opinion is yes. I go around Santa Clara County and I meet with other general law city elected officials at city level, council members and mayors. And one thing that stands out is they have a council decided and voted mayor, and the shared leadership that these other general law cities provide is really a structure that makes a difference. It's, there's an impact on the work and the business that's conducted. Other cities in Santa Clara County, general law cities like ours, they call it organizational restructuring, and it happens annually periodically as councils continue to make decisions as a team. And so, as we discuss this item tonight, I remain firm and consistent with my position on shared leadership, in this case here in the city of Milpitas, the vice mayor position, which is held by someone going back to 1954, I believe, as someone that is elected as a city council member. We'll continue the discussion here. Next up, we have Councilmember Montano.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had one clarifying question from, to the city attorney. So in 1976, we, the people of Milpitas voted to have elected mayors? So that means, that tells me that before the mayors were all appointed, or?
Correct, so.
I didn't know that. I thought they were, it's always been elected, so they were appoint, they were appointed.
Yeah, there was a change at one point, the question was posed to the voters to see if they were open to the idea, and they.
So all those mayors up there before 1976, they were, they were appointed from the council? Okay. That just, just wanted to clarify that. I didn't know that. Thanks. That's all I wanted to ask.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Montano. Next up, we have Councilmember Finn.
Two quick questions. Ashwini, what, what exactly is an interim update? Why is it a?
So, on December 17th, we were asked to maybe bring back an interim update on the polls. The poll is not yet done, so when the initial discussion happened on December 3rd, we were asked to bring it back on the 21st, January 21st, so that it would allow enough time for the polling if people were away from the holidays. And we're also doing some research on the other cities, and we didn't think we could bring it back that quickly. So on the 21st, we were going to bring the poll, the final poll results, and then also research on the other cities. So we just provided an interim update as was asked on December 17th.
Okay, thank you. And then, the other question is for Chris, how recent was the statement from the Attorney General? Is it from, or rather, is it the current position?
It's an excellent question, and the citation I have in the memo does not have a year associated with it, so I'll have to look it up, but no, it actually does, sorry. It was 1984, so it was some time ago.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Finn. Next up, we have Councilmember Nunez.
As I recall, when we talked about bringing it back, it was also because Jennifer was going to be doing the majority of the work in, is she physically gone now?
She is, but she has kind of passed it on to other people in, in the city, so we're able to access the poll.
So, if we were to ask who's taking the lead in the city, who would that be?
At this point, it would be me on the polling, and then the staff in the, in the city manager's office, the management fellows kind of helping access the actual report and make sure that the poll's still out there.
The background of the fellow is, fellow not being a descriptor, just the position?
Yes, it's the management fellow, the two-year management fellow, and, you know, he, he has some background in communications, but really at this point, it's a stopgap solution as we're looking to get some possible additional part-time help on the communications function. But because the poll was, you know, kind of in the middle of when Jennifer was leaving, he's just helping access it.
So let me talk about process first, because that's where I normally start. Though I was a bit surprised when it, it came here, I think, in listening to everyone, I thought we came to a solution that at least allowed persons to weigh in on a topic, if I were to say was highly sensitive, would be an understatement. It, it doesn't feel like it to me that in the weeks that have passed, and I'm really just talking about Jennifer leaving, that the city has thought through a plan of how to sort of pick it up and where to go to next. And I'm not in any way saying that that should be yours to do. And when I say city, that's a bigger way of catching all of us. But I also know that we're sort of standing still. And for me, standing still, I don't know where we're, I don't know what to do with just standing still. There's lots of things that still need to be done. I think Anthony and I have three or four things still left on the list, the old style that we had adapted to. I put two more on this time thinking, I'm testing out to see if this is the new style we're going to. But I probably have six or seven more that I want to put on, you know? And this isn't allowing me to do anything but just stand here and wait, and I'm not the type that likes to just stand and wait, because all I do is see people pass me by. I see other cities passing us by, I see opportunities pass us by. Really what I'm doing is talking out loud, and I'm not talking specifically to you, Ashwini. I'm, what I'm trying to do is work my way through to where do we go from here? Because as I looked at the numbers, those numbers aren't large enough to help us move. What I'm told here a lot is to read, I suppose it would be Chris, to read the, is it municipal? Is that what you say, Chris?
Municipal codes are, are laws, yes.
So I had lots of time when I was gone to do that. And what I found is, when persons tell me, oh, you know, Bob, you can't do that, it's in the municipal code, that's their interpretation of what's in that code. That isn't exactly what those words say. It's how they've been interpreted over the years. So, as I sit here, I am not one to want to keep doing nothing. I am sensitive to both the mayor, who wants to do shared governance, and that's a term I use often. You can ask the city manager. We either discuss that or arm wrestle that a lot. I'm also sensitive to the vice mayor, that she has said, I thought I was in this for two years, and I'd like to finish my two years. I'd like to think there's a way we can do both, because to me, it's about moving this, the city and all of our agendas that are positive for the city forward. And if we can't do that tonight, then we have bigger issues than this one. And as I look at it, there are three more persons up here. I will give you that, I sat in on the installation of officers at MUSD. Granted, it was an accident. I went there for another reason, and mine was lower on the agenda. But I watched them go through and seat the president, vice president, and clerk. They had a very, I, I liked the process they used. They talked about why someone was being nominated, why they were voting for the person, and I, it, it made me feel that there was some real thought behind why someone was sitting in a particular chair. As you know, I'm the vice president for the NAACP, but there's two vice presidents for the NAACP. At La Raza Roundtable, most persons don't know that there are five chairs of that organization. We let Victor say he is the chair, because he is one of the founding members, but there's four other of us, other, of the same rank. So we have the same ability to commit that organization, speak for the organization, if that's what we want to do. But we're able to find those areas that we want to be in, that we feel we have a strength, and, and participate at whatever level we want. But we don't allow the organization to not move ahead, move sideways, if that's what they need to do. Because one of us isn't there, because one of us doesn't agree, the organization moves on because they have to, or they don't exist. So I, for one, thank you for the information. I do believe, though, that, I, for one, I like the NAACP model. If shared governance is what the mayor would like to have, I cannot say I don't like it, because that's what I keep talking about. And if you talk to the city manager, he's probably sick of me saying that, and the books that I keep giving him to read about that. But it's a model that I swear by. So I would say that we consider keeping the vice mayor in her position as vice mayor, adding another vice mayor, looking at what roles we both want to fill, because I understand Councilman Finn, at the last meeting, said he did not want to be considered. If he changes his mind, I would kindly let him use, take that role on. But I think that way, both parties can feel that they are contributing, and the fact that it may or may not be something that's being done in other cities doesn't bother me in the least. I don't need to be, I don't need to replicate what's done in other cities. I don't need to be, I don't need to replicate what's done in other cities. If this works for Milpitas, great. I for one would, I think what you saw today is all of us trying to get our ideas heard and it all happened under announcements. Now, if you think announcements means new agenda items, that's a stretch of the imagination. But we all figured that out. For me, I used to be the chief negotiator for every organization I've ever been at. I've been the chief negotiator. And what persons told me at the end is that I could go have a cup of coffee with every group, no matter how good or bad those negotiations were. And they would say, why do you think that is, Bob? You must give too much. I said, now, you have to let persons always keep their dignity intact when you're done. I'd like to think that there's going to be issues that we have here. They're going to need all five of us working together. Sometimes only four of us, because only four of us believe in it. But at the end of the day, all five of us should be able to go out and have that cup of coffee. Just don't tell Chris because he'll say it's a violation of the brownie. But we're a team, the five of us. When, when we're together, we're doing what's best in our eyes for the city. I see us acting more and more like a team. And I'd like us to be able to meet the needs of the two asking us for consideration of something different. And I hope this meets those needs. So I've already said too much because people tell me I talk too much once I get rolling, so I'm going to try to stop. And I want to thank you for listening because you're the only one I can look at what I was talking. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Nunez. I appreciate your proposal in terms of our shared leadership governance structure. I know there are various structures for organizations across different agencies, governments, organizations, teams. And so I appreciate your proposal. Find it very difficult to support a structure that takes us away from our traditional model, a one that's used across every general law city in California. I'm not sure, you know, I would love the information if there's another city that has two vice mayors. I'm always accepting information. So I appreciate your proposal and I hear, I hear in my heart your intent and I appreciate that very much. I also want to say I appreciate the data that was provided, although the sample is, is quite insignificant and the methodology is lacking. One for a study to bring meaningful outputs and data. I would like to state again my intent to use my mayor seat and the traditions before me, going back decades to do what's best for Milpitas. And I think that by having shared leadership and providing and distributing opportunity to another person on this council who has not had the opportunity, I believe that is what's best for Milpitas. It's important, the utmost importance for me to ensure that our city is moving. There's residents out in the community, on our streets, on our waterways. These folks don't have two years. Some don't have two days. And so I've made a lot of difficult decisions in this building. And I've brought forward solid reasoning and truths. And so tonight, I don't think we're going to take any further action after tonight. As you mentioned, Councilmember Nunez, I'm with you on that one. We're not going to continue this discussion. There's really an endpoint here where I hope that this council make a decision for what's best for the residents of Milpitas and the business that we conduct in this chamber. I would like to create shared leadership with the vice mayor position and provide and distribute the opportunity to another member that hasn't had it. I want to remind folks that we've had members of this council who've had the opportunity, Councilmember Montana. And so there's a trend. And so tonight I want to nominate Councilmember Nunez to be the vice mayor for this year 2020 and distribute the leadership and opportunity. And I stand by my statement, which is consistent that this is what's best for our city government structure, not just in 2020, but every year going forward. Next up, Vice Mayor Dominguez.
Thank you so much, Mayor. It's a new year. It's the year 2020. The year of possibilities, the year of collaboration, the year of hope. As I look at the wall and I see the history of Milpitas, primarily with one of the films that's being filmed in our own city of 54. What was that message? The message of the leaders then was to bring unity, to bring one community together, regardless of your background, regardless of the color of your skin. It was to make tough decisions, as you stated, Mayor Tran. Decisions that are going to last a lifetime and are going to make an impact to the true team that we are all trying to build up here. And that is what I'm hearing. See, the last two weeks, we've been off. I've been thinking a lot of what my colleagues have told me, some of the direction that I have seen on this council. I went back to the meetings and just even heard myself talk on the video. And one thing that I know for sure is that in four years, I don't want to sound like the same person that I sounded in 2019. Not because I didn't believe in that person, but because I want to see that person myself be better. I want to improve. I want to grow as a person, as a leader, as a colleague. And as Councilmember Fans once stated, a title doesn't make you. And I agree with that statement, but I also am hearing what Councilmember Nunez is saying and I was hearing what Mayor Rich Tran, who still can't look at me in the eye. Mayor Tran, could I please have you look at me? The respect of a person and of a leader to all of us comes from something as simple as how we treat each other, especially in times when we don't agree, because that's going to happen a lot. That is part of being a leader. That is part of leading, is how are you going to find those weaknesses, those vulnerabilities and make them better? Because as Councilmember Nunez, I'm listening to him and what I'm really feeling is we all want to move Milpitas forward. I think this is a topic that is really dividing even the survey in itself, is a very divisive question. You have two leaders who have proposed ideas with many more council members who have proposed ideas for this team that came out during the announcement part. And I want to focus on something that I heard Councilmember Nunez say. And many of you know, I am very policy driven. The announcement part, there is a little sentence there that has allowed for a new way of doing things in Milpitas, which is bringing ideas forward. But I want to caution on that because what's happening is we're burning our staff out. Because ideas are coming through the announcement phase and I don't believe the announcement phase was designated for that. I definitely appreciate what it has done because it has brought, when I listened to the, the first time I listened to this idea, there was two words that popped up to my mind. Shared leadership and shared governance. And as I listen to Councilmember Nunez and his wisdom, I think those are the two words that struck out and made us focus. Wow, this is a great idea. But as I listen to our community, as I talk to those at home, and I would differ from what you stated, Mayor Tran, that although the 118 people is an insignificant number for you and your lens.
Clarification for the record, how many people completed the survey?
How many, was it 112?
112 viewed it and I believe it was 84.
Okay, so 84.
84 people provided response.
Thank you. However, that doesn't make a difference in my lens. And this is where perspectives is different and this is maybe where we lead differently. A perspective of someone's opinion on a survey or someone coming here is valuable. It is very valuable. That tells me 84 people took the time to do this survey, a survey that was rushed because the idea was rushed. It came through us in a week. And I don't want to continue moving into 2020 having this discussion because what I am feeling is that it's really just dividing. It's dividing this team. It's dividing our community. It's just dividing. It's not uniting, which is something that I believe shared leadership is all about. I do believe that in my experience in governance, I stay away from the phrase that has never been done before. Because that doesn't allow us, I believe, to grow, doesn't allow us to look, to disrupt, to bring some new ideas. Because Milpitas isn't 2020. It's no longer in 1954. No longer in 1956. That's why the process has changed. So I would differ in the sentiments that have been shared that we have to look at other jurisdictions and see how they have done things. I think they serve as a point of starting, but I don't believe that that's where we should follow. I think Milpitas, we are able to move in the direction that should serve those that we serve the best. And so what I have been hearing is that shared leadership is something that's rotational, which I agree with. And I've been hearing that from all my colleagues, including Councilmember Nunez and Mayor Rich Tran. And listening and talking with community members over the two-week break and really some of the forefathers in this region in governance, I do believe that there has to be a transparent. Many people that were here two weeks ago or three weeks ago when we discussed this, they were under the impression that this topic would be decided on the 21st. And we did it that way because the holiday season was upon us and we wanted to give them the opportunity to show up. And so I want to be respectful of that. And I do believe that we need to come to a decision by the 20th, next meeting. I don't think we should prolong this any longer. I believe in transparency. I believe that being part of shared governance. And I love the idea that Councilmember Nunez brought forth. It does give me the ability to think in a transparent way. And I do believe in speaking with our community, want to wrap it up. One of the things that has been lacking in this building is the ability to engage community. Because they prepare for something and then the council moves in a different direction, just like how it may sound like based on the statements from the mayor that he is, you know, he's made a nomination tonight. I don't believe that's transparency. Because everyone who was in this room, the reporters who were reporting the story, we all reported out that the 21st was going to be the day that the report was going to come out and that we were going to have that conversation on that 21st. But now we have decided to have it. For point of clarification, city manager, I received, so I prepped for my council meetings pretty early. I received a draft and Mary, you could maybe help me. I received a draft for the agenda, I believe. Could you remind me, when did you release that to us?
Thursday evening last week.
And there was a draft, that was a draft agenda and the agenda that went forth for tonight's meeting went out on Friday, correct?
Yes.
And so we are expecting our community to, after a holiday break, as they're coming back from vacation, to be on our council portal, to look at the agenda that's been set forth and for them to make plans to be at a council meeting on Tuesday to discuss a very important topic. That is not transparency. That is not part of shared governance. In fact, that is exactly what makes people not trust politicians. That is what makes people not be engaged, as we're seeing here. Thank you so much for those who are in the audience. That is what makes people not want to come to their home, which is City Hall. And because of that lack of transparency, I don't feel confident that I could move forward with any decision that's going to be made today. Because a key factor is missing here, the people that we represent. There was no transparency in this process and Mayor Rich Tran, you talk about shared governance. This is not shared governance. This is you moving forward an idea for a very different purpose, which is something you can't still look at me in the eye and clearly describe. But for 2020, I'm focusing on all of us. That includes the person that's behind that camera.
Point of clarification, I'm just taking notes here. Carry on.
So could you look at me now?
I have to take notes as you're speaking.
Members, please know that I respect each and every one of you. And I am learning as I go. I'm asking you to please allow me to finish my two-year term as a vice mayor because that's what I was told in the beginning. Year one, I learned the job. I learned it because I was able to be mayor and hold that position more than twice that I remember. I am now ready to implement and to move all of our ideas forward in whatever way I could be supported in that. And as I'm listening to Councilmember Nunez, I am going to share something that the community has been telling me. They believe in shared governance, which is something we all believe in. They believe in a rotational system. They just don't believe it should be every two years. What I would like to see, and this was going to, this is going to be a proposal that my colleagues are going to see and I am writing the memo as we speak, starting after this meeting, because I did not know we were going to move into this conversation today. But my proposal for the 21st was going to be this. For us to have shared governance in a rotational system, to allow full transparency, to allow the member that has the most experience help lead the city, lead the conversations that are going to ignite and open doors. I would recommend that the member who has had the most time on this dais to be rotated into the vice mayor role every two years. I believe that system is fair. I believe that system gives shared governance. And in the, in the, in the position that we are in, two members holding the exact same amount of time on this dais, then I would go with that member that has captured the most voters in the most recent election. I believe that would give us I believe that would give us fair, shared, and transparent governance, a governance that is supported by the community, who is not here today because we lacked to give them that transparency. With that, unfortunately, I don't, I'm not supporting the position that Councilmember Nunez came forward today, not because I don't think it's a great idea. I think it's an amazing idea. However, I just was not prepared to move forward without the audience here. The community believes this conversation is going to be held on the 21st, but I do want to share and be transparent with all of you. That is going to be the recommendation that I'm going to be putting forward on the 21st. We don't need to have a discussion on that, but because of the lack of transparency and because I believe that is part of shared governance, unfortunately, tonight, I'm going to have to abstain from any voting because we're missing the community, and that's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Dominguez. Point of clarification, we, we, a number of times have draft agendas that go out. And so this agenda is nothing out of the ordinary. I remind you that we had the agenda for the PG and E item, which came later as well. So that's, there are numerous examples of agendas, and that's the way we've been conducting business here in Milpitas for as long as I've been here. And I just want to, point of clarification. Next up, we'll go to Councilmember Fan.
Yes, thank you. Couple of thoughts. First of all, Councilmember Nunez, I, I appreciate your efforts towards compromising, towards team building, towards, you know, starting the year off positive. I, I get it. And as it relates to shared governance, the idea of having a successor announced while having a sitting Vice Mayor, I think it is one that is difficult to wrap my head around because it's, like I said before, we're occupants of a temporary office, and we don't know what's going to happen next year. When, when we talk about shared governance, we won't potentially even have the ability to share that governance if we're not here to, you know, be a part of it. And as much as I would like that to happen, a lot of the things ahead are unpredictable. And it might be a bit of hubris if we assume, you know, that whoever is appointed is, or is announced, will actually still be here to fill that role. So it comes down for me at the discretion of the original proposer, and that's all there is to it. The things that I've said at the last meetings, I still mean. And I'm sure that people still take it the same way. But to be in the, the Chair of Vice Mayor, I think one of the things that is desired of every city government is somebody who can work with the mayor and work with the rest of the council. It's that sense of diplomacy, that, the temperament, and it comes down to that. And I think Councilmember Nunez displays all of those traits, and I second your motion, Mayor Tran.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. I want to take a moment here to pause, to really be in the moment. And when you think about a team, as Councilmember Nunez was discussing momentarily ago, a team is interchangeable. Like the Golden State Warriors, I'll use basketball. Maybe it's because I went to UCLA and basketball is always a big part of my experience, but, you know, every great team is more than just one player. Every great team is more than just two players. There's more than just the mayor and Vice Mayor. I think this is an opportunity tonight to strengthen our team. And there's nothing wrong with sharing the ball, being selfless. That's what it comes down to. And having the great honor to serve my hometown, the place I grew up in and to lead as the chief elected officer, I want to see more of my teammates have the opportunity. And I appreciate you, Councilmember Fan. And I look to my colleague, each and every one. I'm asking folks to step up and step up tonight in what is best for Milpitas. And so my nomination, based on three years' worth of hard work, sweat and tears, someone that I haven't always aligned with, voted differently in many ways, and it goes to show that I'm reaching out to Councilmember Nunez to be the next Vice Mayor of Milpitas. Folks don't have two weeks out in Milpitas, and it's important that we lead, and I want to share the leadership. As Councilmember Montana shared it, and I see a council here that is full of folks that have a heart to share. And so I'll look to Councilmember Nunez. You have some of your team here asking for your leadership.
It's not often one catches me at a loss for words. So I'm only going to say a few. I often tell persons that I'm an exceptional bureaucrat. As an elected official, I'm okay. And as a bureaucrat City Manager, there always comes a time when, you know, it's, you make your decision, you move on. The reason you got to make a decision because you always don't have all day, you don't have an extra month, you can't keep telling the people in the pines, well, we're going to study that one more time because after a while, they don't believe you. It, it is not news to anyone. And I think I've said this here before, that my relationship with our mayor has been a rocky one, at best.
Look at us now.
Yep, and that takes work. And I believe we all do that work for the citizens of Milpitas. I spent two weeks at Christmas time down seeing my children, my brothers and sisters and my mother. Most persons thought I was getting my house ready down south to move into. I must have 50 relatives down in Southern California, so nothing can be closer to the truth. Nobody wants to be that close to that many people. I'd rather be up here. But as my mother said, it was okay for me to come down and visit. Because she knows my heart is still up here. Because she knows that I have still work to be done. She has all those people down there to take care of her, so as long as I come and visit, I'm okay. And she's right. I don't want to leave here feeling as if my job is only half done. If you had asked me this morning about this Vice Mayor role, I would have said there's no way in hell that I would say yes to that. But here we are at nine o'clock. And so the answer is yes. Let me tell you why the answer is yes. I hope to do as good a job as those before me. I have had the opportunity to watch directly two very strong women in that role. On TV, I got to watch another strong woman. In my career, I have been supervised, hired by very strong women. It's time for me to step into a role that I've never had before and see how much of that I retained and how much I can give back. And see what I can do to help others and hope that I can do just a fraction of what I've seen all these others do. The fact, Rich, that you would even ask me surprises me. I think it shows the growth in you. The fact that I would say yes shocks me to still to no end. But if you think I can do it.
I know you can do it.
Then I will do my best. And my goal will be to show this council that I will, I will make sure that we stay a team, and I promise not to let you down. And Vice Mayor, I have learned from you and Anthony probably more than anyone, I've learned who I truly am from you. So with that, I don't need to carry on. My children and wife will do that. Some will say great, others will say other words, but shorter. But if you think I can help, that's what I'm supposed to be doing is helping this city. So the answer would be yes. If offered, I will take it.
I know you can do it, Councilmember Nunez, and I thank you for meeting me and stepping up to a call for shared leadership. And I'll be honored to have three Vice Mayors on this council, and I think that's a record in the history of the City of Milpitas. And I look forward to having many more. I'll take further questions by the media after the item. With that being said, we'll look to Chris. I want to move the recommendation, and I know we'll move forward thereafter.
The staff report does indicate a recommendation that allows for potential action, so you could take action tonight. I would just encourage you, if there's any public comment that you'd want to take before taking any vote, that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the reminder, Chris. We'll go to public comment. And we'll begin now, I'm looking in the chamber. Come on up, Mr. Montemeyer.
Walter Montemeyer of Milpitas since 1980. It's a tough night. I respect all of you. Well, give me the chance to tell everybody also, I have a dream since I was a child to be a mayor someday, whether in Milpitas or somewhere. And as long as we're all together, whether we will have a new Vice Mayor, whether we will retain with the last chance, with the last minute, or whenever, whatever the decision that you have, I respect it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Uncle. Next up, Mr. Ag.
Well, I've been a member of this community for over 25 years, and I think this is the first time that I've listened at length to the council's opinions on a situation that not cleared me as to why it's even being raised at this particular point in time. I've been in business for many years, and one of the titles is, or one of the agreements is that you're employed at will. But if there's an issue where you need to move somebody out of a particular position, you have to have very, very good reasons. And I'm, still hard for me to really understand why the Vice Mayor should be challenged in her position when she's only one year into a two-year term. I think it's a wonderful idea to have a rotation, but why do it at this particular point in time? I would imagine, as any officer or any council member, you would have mapped out a plan for what you intend to do in the period of time that you're going to be on the council. you would have mapped out a plan for what you intend to do in the period of time that you're going to be on the council. And I would assume, because I've listened to Karina for a long period of time now, that she has a plan for two years as vice mayor. So I haven't really heard, Mayor, what exactly it is that needs to change that she should not be given the opportunity to complete her two years. I respect your opinion, I respect all the council's opinions, but I'm disappointed to hear that we are going through this at this point in time. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Agg. I, I know you've been a member of this community for quite some time, and there's nothing more I love than longtime Milpitasians. If I may respond just briefly, I am tasked with making the toughest decisions here in the city of Milpitas. Decisions that, proposals and requests that I'll live with for the rest of my life here in my hometown. And there's different ways of looking at the decisions that are made in this building. But it's how you look at it, and it's not about one person. Okay, public comment continues.
Tom Valory, resident in Milpitas. I think the one thing in my 80 years that irks me the most is when somebody tells me they're going to do something and then doesn't do it. Effectively, a decision was made, and now in midstream, you change your mind. You may have some reasons for doing that, but there are better ways of approaching it. There's no doubt in my mind that Bob Nunez will make a fine vice mayor. I know Bob very well, and I respect him quite a bit. And I, to be honest with you, voted for him for mayor. So
I'm trying to
Obviously, I, I believe that he can do the, he can do the job. But it just bothers me that we, a decision was made and a process that we have followed for many years was changed in midstream. Sure, if you want to change it, then wait until we get to the point where we've run out the existing process and then make the change. Don't make the change midway through and effectively violate your commitment to the individual who you've made that commitment to.
I appreciate your comments, Tom. I want to be very, I deeply appreciate it, I respectfully, I do want to comment just very briefly. I feel like it's my job to get you what you deserve and you know, Milpitas is Milpitas, there's nothing like Milpitas, I'll tell you that. And when I travel across this great country to all the hundreds of cities out there, when I go to the mayor's conference, I talk to the mayors and I see different types of decisions that are made, particularly in this regard. And this is a decision that I believe is best for the city and a start to something that will have a positive impact for all. And we don't really have to look too far to see these type of decisions that are made. And I think when I observe these appointment decisions throughout our nation and our region, I've only seen positive outcomes for those communities. Public comment continues. Come on up.
Hi, Eric Shoker, San Jose resident. But I know what I, at least I believe what I'm about to say is shared by a lot of Milpitas residents that also aren't here tonight, that would probably like to speak as they did in the polling. Disappointment was a wonderful word that somebody used. But the things that you just said, I think typifies it specifically. This is what you think is in the best interest for Milpitas. And the weakness of your flaccid leadership is on display through this whole process. And it's rather disappointing to see Bob Nunez be willingly played by you because of the insecurities and the problems that you have. And now, I'm pretty much done with what I have to say, but you're going to spend who knows how long retorting to me with your nonsensical clapback that I don't think anybody in the community ever deserves to get after they come up to public comment, like you do, with your mansplaining and your nonsense. But, you know, I just think there's a lot of Milpitas residents that I know that are really disappointed in what's happening here. And I hope that the council, whatever decision you make, whatever, it's not about any of you four. I just don't want to see anybody get played because of somebody else's problems. And I guess it's my turn to listen to you now.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Public comment continues. Okay, I appreciate everybody being here tonight. It's always going to be Milpitas families first. And tonight is one of the toughest nights to make decisions. But that's what we're here to do. With that being said, if there's any further comments, I'll look to Chris.
And I would look back to the council if there's a motion on the table.
I got a motion.
We may just want to clarify, clearly articulate for our city clerk what that motion is.
I am making a motion to appoint a new vice mayor for shared leadership governance consistent with what was discussed tonight. I move the recommendation for one year till the end of the, what is it, the next election?
November 3rd this year.
Okay. Or when the new officers or those that are elected are seated.
That will take place the second meeting of December.
That'll be all. We have a second by Councilmember Fan. All in favor? Aye. Any pose? The motion is carried.
Do we want to do real call, just to clarify for the record? Councilmember Fan? Councilmember Montana? Councilmember Nunez? Vice Mayor Dabingas? And Mayor Tran?
Aye.
Three affirmative votes, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on tonight's agenda. Reports of Mayor and council members, receive request from Mayor Tran for study on potential performing arts center in Milpitas. Welcome, Renee. We save the best for last.
Thank you so much. All right. This item is to receive the request from Mayor Tran for the study on potential performing arts center in Milpitas. Staff will give a brief, a number of slides based on the nature of the request. So on December 17th, Mayor Tran requested, and the city council agreed to place an item related to a potential performing arts center on the January 7th, 2020 council agenda. This is in response to earlier requests from Councilmember Nunez and Fan, who had also submitted interest forms and AR request forms for a community theater study. So tonight's item really is for the council to consider approving staff time to conduct a study of more than four hours on a potential performing arts center in Milpitas, to which we would come back and report back. So just a little bit of information on previous related studies. In 1998, the city had commissioned a cultural arts center feasibility study. Information in that study did include or was in regards to the committee need, market conditions, operating costs and construction budget. But those are outdated since the study is quite old and would need to be reevaluated. Most recently, a community outreach for the performing arts program study, which happened in the summer of 2019, did capture some initial information of the types of performing arts programs, events and preferred performance space. However, additional work, a deeper dive into that study of those preferred uses, audience capacities would need to be done to really evaluate the type of space the city would need for a performing arts center. So with that, the request tonight is simple. The council's to consider approving more than four hours of staff time to conduct a study on a potential performing arts center in Milpitas. And we would report back to city council with the possibility of adding this project to the capital improvement program.
Thank you very much, Renee. I'm so happy this item is here, and I want to first start off by recognizing Councilmember Nunez this evening and Councilmember Fan for actually proposing this originally. I think that when it got to the rural subcommittee, there is a paradox, and it ended up getting stuck in there. And so appropriately, in these chambers, we have it brought back tonight. And that's what we're here to do, is to get business done in the city and to take care of all the Milpitas families. And the performing arts proposal is just that. I will say before I pass it over here to my colleague, Councilmember Nunez, this is a gaping hole in our community. And I am thoroughly excited about this proposal by Councilmember Nunez and Councilmember Fan. Councilmember Nunez.
Could you go back just one slide? I think it's one slide. So not having seen the 1998 study, which I'd like to copy. Now, if you go back to the last one. I want to make sure that we're not going to limit ourselves to just a performing arts center. That we're going to look at performing arts center, the possibility of an amphitheater, the possibility of the, something that would include space for the historical society and their things. So I just want to make sure that wording doesn't limit us. Does that? That make sense?
I think that could definitely be part of the motion tonight for the direction of the staff time to include those items as part of the study that we would bring back.
Okay. So, does that mean yes?
Yes, you can definitely provide us direction to look at other components beyond just the center.
Because I know that we've been in discussions with the historical society and the land that they purchased, they now would like to be involved in the discussions to see if that could be used. I also want to make sure that we had also talked about what could happen on refurbishing of the property here, that theater. But also, I don't want to leave out the discussions with MUSD and their theater over, or the Samuaires. But it doesn't mean that we couldn't look at just an amphitheater, outdoor amphitheater someplace else. So all of those things are sort, as long as they're all open for, for review.
Okay.
Love it. And I do want to, you know, it's amazing what this council can do. I mean, look at the snack shack over at the sports center. We all came together. We're gonna, you know, snack shacks, they took it down, I think, last time I was over there, the fence, you know, the skate park right here. And so next up, this performing arts, a variety of ideas. Councilmember Nunez, I want to thank you for that. And, you know, something just like an amphitheater where there's a stage and you know, proper facilities for high-quality performing arts for our youth. And shout out the center stage, I see one of our parents here, Little Mermaid this weekend, as we mentioned earlier. But, you know, as fast as the snack shack moved, I know we got plenty of parks, you know, folks say Milpitas is running out of space, I don't think so. There's plenty of opportunity out there, and there always will be in Milpitas. So I'm looking forward to Councilmember Nunez and Fan's proposal. And I think this is the year to do it, and just get on the board. Let's just get in on the board. Okay, next up, Councilmember Montana.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. I really like the concept of amphitheater. Because that is just really thinking out of the box, because if you, I was thinking of a, you know, the standard
Somewhere you can sing, huh?
The standard building, but really, an amphitheater is a lot cheaper. That's, and that's the bottom line, how much, because we were worried, well, it's going to cost a lot.
Sonny Hills Park, maybe?
But you know what I was thinking, like, the park next to the library. I think that's an ideal place, and, and I think right now there's negotiations of taking it back to the city, selling it back to the city. So I think that would be an awesome place. It's right there by the library, so I like it.
Yes, all right, we're going back to Councilmember Nunez here.
Yeah, just, I forgot one other spot we looked at, because really, the, the library itself could be a focal point, and that is using the building right across the street, Smith House.
The Jerry's House.
As for the historical society, that's part of the, the, something to look at in lieu of the parkland they have. But also, city manager, all that land that's underneath Calaveras, that I understand is city property, right? That I think it's underutilized for, for outdoor use. But if we utilize that, my understanding is that's a way to get the state to put in funds to widen Calaveras, that bridge. If we're going to utilize that, then that's, that's an entry point for additional dollars there. But I just want to make sure all of, that's probably one tenth of a percent of what you should be looking at. But as long as somebody's looking at all those is all I wanted to add. That last point I got from Councilman Fan.
Fantastic, next up, speaking of Councilmember Fan. Councilmember Fan?
Yeah, well, thank you so much for expediting this. You know how items can just get stuck under, upon items and items. So I think that I would like, as part of this, so that as part of the direction for staff to be expedient on the timeline, so that we have ample time to prepare ahead. So I think a part of that study, I'd like to see sources of revenue to fund this. And if it makes the most sense for something to be placed on the ballot so that we can fund it, whether it be a parcel tax or a bond measure. You know, if, if that is an option, you know, I want to look at all of the options. Because at the end of the day, we will have to fund this. And we should have that conversation ahead of time so that we can prepare for you know, whatever route we want to go towards. As part of that, if we could also look into, you know, if it has an open space component to it, if it is outdoor, if it qualifies for some of the open space grants that are out there, if it qualifies for, or if legally we can use, for example, park funds for that, especially if it is outdoor. You know, I think this is really neat because it's an opportunity for us to get really creative. And that's what this performing arts center is really going to be all about.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Fan, and we'll take a look at all the options and choose the best one. All right, I think we've come to an accord here on the dais, and it's a pretty, I think, fun item to have staff get to work on. And I am thankful that we are serving here in 2020. And I'm thankful for the world and local economy, actually, that we live in, that we're able to make these decisions. And we have a window of opportunity with our general fund and government, our revenues really going to record numbers. And we're having the, really the ability to even consider these projects. projects. And I know Milpitas has been around for almost 66 years now. Birthday's coming up, January 27. Milpitas is birthday, is it 26? 26. But the party goes for two days, that's what I'm trying to say. And so, yeah, hopefully, we can celebrate that when it comes around soon and let the city know how much we love Milpitas. With that being said, I believe we are looking for a motion. Chris?
On this one, I may ask whoever had the most ideas to help with the motion, because I know there was a lot of stuff in there, and I want to make sure that our staff has clear direction.
Oh, my goodness. My apologies.
So that a study on, not so much an arts center, but on arts facilities to include performing arts center, amphitheater, et cetera, or, or things of that sort, that could, we could partner with other agencies and their funding sources. That work?
It works great. I look forward to seeing all the options. Thank you very much, Councilmember Nunez. How's that, Chris?
Just add, to bring back also just the revenue options that Councilmember Phan had. And I know you kind of have that in there, but just a little expanded. Thank you.
Absolutely. And again, timeframe, I want to, you know, kind of in tune with as we go through the CIP. Yeah. I got that one. But no, yeah, we want to respect the efforts of staff. And we'll wait. But if we can kindly please ask for it to come around when we do the budget and such so that we could put it in the CIP somewhere, once we connect all the dots. Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Nunez. We have a second by Councilmember Phan. All in favor of the performing arts center ideas? Aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. We're going to go to Councilmember Montana.
I just wanted to mention, if you've ever gone to the Montalvo Center, it's a nice amphitheater, and it's a historic site. So we have, the library's a historic site. I really love your idea, and I'm hoping that we can get that, that lot right next to the library. That's the ideal place, in my opinion. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much for those comments. Thank you, Renee. Happy New Year. All right, moving on to item number seven. Let's receive a preview list of agenda items for the next city council meeting on the January 21st, 2020. And I think the council, we've reviewed that respectively. Okay, so that's received. And we'll go to Councilmember Nunez.
Just real quick, so the, the new minute format will be for these, this, today's meeting. And will it include something with regard to the, Mary, the video, I don't know what we're calling it? Is it video streaming or?
Facebook Live.
Yeah, Facebook Live or something. So if somebody wants to only see item three, they can go to item three?
Yes, that's available now and will be available on the Facebook Live as well. Yes?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, we are here in 2020. And I've never been, and I've said this openly too many, I've never been so excited for a new calendar year to serve. And my confidence in the city council is at an all-time high, and we are ready to get to work. This meeting is adjourned.